The broadcast of the regular meeting of the Minneapolis City Council will now begin.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the president of the Minneapolis City Council, and I will call to order this regular meeting for May 14th, 2020. And I'll note that this meeting has remote participation under our emergency declaration, and I will ask the clerk to please call the roll to verify a quorum for this meeting.
Councilmember Ellison. Councilmember Goodman.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Present.
Councilmember Gordon.
Here.
Ellison, present.
Councilmember Gordon.
I'm here as well.
Councilmember Kano.
Here.
Councilmember Reich.
Here.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Here.
Councilmember Schrader.
Here.
Councilmember Osman. Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Ellison.
Present.
Councilmember Osman.
Present.
Councilmember Cunningham. Vice President Jenkins.
Here.
President Bender.
Here.
There are 12 members present.
Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum for today's meeting. This meeting is public and subject to the Minnesota Open Meeting Law, Section 13D.021, and this meeting will be recorded and posted on the city's website and YouTube channel as a means of increasing public access and transparency. The meeting for today, the meeting agenda for today's meeting is before us. Are there any amendments to the agenda today? Seeing that, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins. Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you so much, Frank. Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the agenda is adopted. Next, we have the minutes from our regular meeting of April 13th for acceptance. May I have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
The clerk will call the rolls.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and those minutes are accepted. We have the referral petitions, communications, and reports to the proper committees. May I have those motions, please?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and those matters are referred. The first item under new business is the mayor's regular status report on the state of our local emergency addressing the response to COVID-19. That report has been circulated to council members and is linked for public access in the LIMs' online agenda. It looks like that Mayor Frye has not been able to join us for this meeting this morning, but we do have staff from the Health Department available to answer questions. I know that there was an announcement late last night from, or I guess in the afternoon-evening time, from Governor Walz related to the state's mask mandate being lifted, and I thought it would be helpful to hear what we know so far from our Health Commissioner and staff. And then there was an email in the evening from Mayor Frye's, one of Mayor Frye's communications staff with an announcement that the city's mask mandate will stay in place. So Commissioner, if you could maybe just outline for us, if possible, the status of the guidance that we're receiving from various sources.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, there's been a rapid fire of announcements and pivoting of our approach to COVID in the last 24 hours. Starting with the CDC announcement that their research shows that if you are fully vaccinated, meaning two weeks after your completed dose, so Johnson &amp; Johnson, that would be one dose, or Pfizer or Moderna, two doses, so two weeks after that, if you're fully vaccinated, that you are not, that you are protected from asymptomatic COVID, which means that you are not able to, without your knowledge, kind of share the virus, and so have made a recommendation that if you are fully vaccinated, you no longer need to wear a mask. That announcement came, and I believe the State Health Department had to, and the governor, had to react quickly to that. And so the governor, I'm not sure of the status this morning, if we've seen the actual change in order from the state, but is removing the statewide mask mandate. So when we learned about these developments last evening, we gathered our epidemiologist, myself, other staff, along with the mayor's staff, and looked at some of our local statistics. And as you may recall, the way that the state rolled out the vaccine, epidemiologically based, older people first, healthcare providers, resulted in disproportionate availability for people of color. And so only now are the preponderance of people of color really eligible, or recently eligible, and certainly have not had time to be fully vaccinated. You know, when we look at Hennepin County overall, that 57% of the population has had one dose, and as you may recall, the governor had set out a goal originally, before yesterday, that 70% of the population would need to at least have one dose before he would lift the mandate. And so in Hennepin County, 57% of the population has had one dose. And in terms of fully vaccinated, and that relates to the CDC guidelines of not wearing masks, in Hennepin County, every racial group, including whites, is below 50% fully vaccinated. So we have more than half of our population does not meet the criteria of being able to remove their masks, according to CDC. In addition to that, when we look inside the city of Minneapolis, we see really some significant disparities in terms of those who have received one dose. For whites, it's actually 71% have received at least one dose, which is not fully vaccinated, does not meet the CDC criteria, but does relate to that goal that the governor had set out originally. For blacks, it's 28%. For Hispanics, it's 35%. And so in many ways, the question of how shall we proceed rests on a goal we have as a city to lead with the notion of equity and to protect our populations equitably. And so that led to the mayor's recommendation that we will continue to look at our data, to talk with experts. We do have a meeting at noon today with our medical advisor to continue to think about what's appropriate to do here. St. Paul is following the same course as we are. I corresponded with the State Commissioner of Health today, and I've been assured that some of the guidelines around social distancing and capacity limits that were to be in place through the end of May will continue to be in place. And so we're just trying to get a full lay of the land. So those are my opening remarks. I'm sure they have sparked, or they might have, sparked additional questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. And again, just thank you for walking us through what you know, given the changing guidelines and announcements that have come very recently. Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. Boy, I went to a virtual discussion about medical access yesterday, and they were talking about this very topic of how the prioritization of seniors really led to the horrific disparities that you just named, 71% versus 28% for African-Americans, 35% for Latino communities. I mean, like, those numbers literally match every other disparity that we have in our city. It's appalling. I just gotta make that comment. When we knew all along, all last year, from March forward, we were saying, people of color are being most impacted by this disease, and yet, the rollout was all about white people. Even when vaccinations were in black communities, white people from all over the state were coming into Minneapolis, taking advantage of those opportunities. I mean, we just keep doing the same thing over and over and getting the exact same results. So I guess I'm just, what's the plan for trying to rectify this situation?
Thank you, Vice President and Madam Chair. I agree with both your sentiments and the outrage behind them. Let me just collect myself a little bit here. So we are engaged with community organizations to bring vaccinations to places where people are already gathered, organizations where people already have a sense of trust. Our food, lodging, and pool staff have been going door-to-door in commercial corridors where there are business owners and employees, many of whom are BIPOC, and reaching out to them, helping them register for vaccines, understanding what kinds of information is important to them, what information they might have picked up in social media that may or may not be correct. And also vaccinating, beginning to vaccinate in schools. And I'll be meeting with my staff to make sure that there's a capacity in that effort to include families at the same time, because I think that's another opportunity to reach into communities, to meet them as they as they're organized, you know? So you're organized around your family, just soon get the whole family taken care of if that's possible. And so we'll be using that approach. In addition, we, of course, have been holding educational opportunities, I think it's more than 60 opportunities that we have had, using language-based radio, reaching out to communities, bringing our message about the vaccine, leading with a understanding of the trauma that people feel from past experiences, and even as you are describing the current situation, that trauma as well, and hopefully creating a sense of camaraderie and trust as that effort. So those are the approaches we're using to date, and we'll certainly keep highlighting those as we report to you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I was just looking for it. I'll find the link to that web material that your staff put together, I think, I'm sure with other staff from other departments as well, and put it in the chat so that council members are able to share that out again. Councilmember Cunningham.
Madam President, before we move on, if I may, I'm sorry, I do want to just acknowledge that these recommendations about prioritizing seniors, et cetera, did come down from the governor, so I want to just recognize, but it continues to replicate the very same oppressive policies that just continue to disenfranchise Black and Brown communities.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, you know, I think that one of the challenges that we have to constantly navigate as local government is the higher levels of government, setting the parameters in which we have to operate. And I have to say, my frustration around the fact that, from the very beginning, the Walz administration said, equity is going to be our main focus, equity is going to be our main focus, we're prioritizing equity, and then proceeded to engage in a very inequitable fashion. And that has truly limited our local ability to be able to really have the kind of impacts that I know that this Health Department wants to see and strives to achieve. And so, you know, I'll just, you know, express my gratitude. I know we are looking at really tough numbers, but I know that the numbers are better than what they would look like if you all had not been doing the amount of work that you had been doing, given the parameters that were set for you all to operate within. I just want to give my partnership, you know, as a Northside Council member that represents an area that has a very large representation of Black Minneapolitans. We have one community clinic in Ward 4, and when the vaccine became available for folks over 18, the line around that clinic was around the corner and down two blocks, and literally every single person in that line was white. And we had done everything in our power to try to get the word out. But a lot of my residents were, you know, my constituents were saying, like, these are clearly folks from the suburbs. Like, these are folks from other parts of Minnesota who would never step foot in North Minneapolis until this resource became available. And essentially, like, the intentionality of trying to have it available in North Minneapolis to not make it to the targeted intended groups. And so, you know, I'm thinking about, like, where are some other areas where, you know, we can have targeted impact? So for example, like, we know that overwhelmingly, kids in our city are children of color, right? And so elementary schools can be a really good opportunity to find parents of color and, you know, be able to reach those families. So I'm super down and available to help partner, bridge, any sort of relationships, help facilitate, so that we can do some intentional outreach. My question that I have is, in the numbers that you broke down, you mentioned white, black, and Latino, but I'm curious if we have numbers about Asian?
Councilmember Cunningham, Madam Chair, those are the numbers that I was given today, and I will look for that information and see if we have that as well. It's been difficult to get data at the city level. We've been able to get it at the county, so at a minimum, I should be able to get it for you at the county level, but I'll see what I can do at the city as well.
Great. Yeah, you know, I want to make sure that Southeast Asian folks are not falling through the cracks unintentionally, because, you know, we don't have the data. And the same goes for Native Americans as well. Making sure that we're, you know, keeping solid track of that. I know we have Noya at the forefront, so she's helping bring that very critical lens. But, you know, with a disproportionate amount of Asian, Southeast Asian, Pacific Islander representation in North Minneapolis, I just want to make sure that we're not losing track of them as well. So that's my question, and I that would, information would be helpful. And I also am curious, and maybe it's somewhere, and I just haven't seen the resource, but do we have a break, like a breakdown, color-coded map of concentration of where folks are getting vaccinated? Like, the percentage of the population in the different wards?
Yes, thank you for the clarification. Councilmember Cunningham, Madam Chair, we are able to see some of that data in terms of at least one dose kind of data by zip code. We are using it for planning purposes and not making it public, because the denominator is a little challenging in that we're using population from 2019 because of the census. We just feel a little iffy about it, but it certainly is sufficient enough to give us a sense of direction and progress.
I think that information would be helpful. If we get to a place in which folks feel comfortable for that to be made public, I think that that information would be very helpful. Just for public transparency sake, I understand the need for statistical solidness before putting information out there. So I would just say that that additional information being public would be helpful for public transparency. All right, that's all I have. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Commissioner, for talking us through this. I mean, I think, you know, the entire experience of governing through a pandemic has been making unpopular choices and facing a set of alternatives that are not fun and that are not anything any of us would have wanted to be in this position of deciding. I think in this case, recognizing that we have a strong commitment on this council that zip codes shouldn't determine access to health, zip codes shouldn't determine outcomes, that your geography is our goal is that your geography is not determinative, that everywhere in the city, everybody is being cared for. And so I think if the information that you're giving us is that in more affluent and wider parts of town, lifting the mask mandate would be a pleasurable, fun thing, that would probably be safe. And if in other parts of town where people haven't had access to the vaccine, it means people will get sick and die, I think it's very clear what the choice is. I think, you know, I actually think that I think I agree with the decision to maintain the mask mandate, even though it's very hard. I will note, just for the record, that I am a believer that in, that the state of emergency is a thing to be taken seriously, and that it gives power to the mayor that the mayor should come and talk to us about. So I'm disappointed that he's not here to be part of this conversation. I think it would be a conversation where I agree with him, and we could have had a constructive conversation about the decision-making process and about how we're going to move forward. I do appreciate you being here, Commissioner, to share this with us. I am worried, given that we're making the right hard decision out of a set of hard decisions, I think, I am worried that it is very confusing. And I'm hearing from business owners especially, who are concerned that they're going to have a very hard time enforcing this. And I know that the Downtown Workers Council has been very concerned from a frontline worker perspective, about maintaining the safety of workers who often come from the zip codes that haven't had as much access to healthcare, to be able to keep themselves safe. And so I'm wondering, I think the rapid rollout of this decision yesterday puts a huge burden on the city to communicate very clearly and very effectively about what our expectations are, so that everybody can mutually enforce them, right? I think as a society, we basically want to follow the rules, and we basically understand that we're trying to keep each other safe, but I think reasonable people right now are hearing so many mixed messages from the state and the CDC and the city that I think it, there's going to be a lot of frustration and disagreement, and people sort of choosing the rules that they like, because they're hearing a lot of different guidance. And so I guess I'm wondering, recognizing that nobody had resources or capacity or had this in their plan, what is our plan to accurately communicate exactly what our mask mandate is, exactly what the rules are in the city of Minneapolis? How can we roll that out as clearly in as many channels as possible? And maybe you can start by reminding us in this meeting, for the, you know, dozens of viewers who watch local cable city council meetings, what is included in our city's mask mandate that we are keeping in place? Under what circumstances are we telling people, "You must wear a mask"?
Thank you, Councilmember Fletcher and Madam President. Let me start with the communication piece. I'm really great on the overall big picture. I don't know if I'm going to be able to tell you the finer details of the current the current mask mandate with accuracy. And so I'm going to step back from that, and hopefully all the kinds of communication we're doing will answer that well. We have, we work with business licensing, we put out a newsletter, they put out a newsletter to businesses. That is always like rapid fire, right on the heels of any decision that's made, so everybody understands what the new guides are. And so we will be doing that again today. The mayor did issue a press release yesterday to be as clear as soon as possible. And I saw that that made it into the Star Tribune on the front page, so certainly, you know, our early efforts are there, but I agree, it's the rapid-fire array of information, both from CDC and the governor, have created confusion. The mask mandate is not new, and so everyone has been living under it, and so it continues. So I think that will cut down So, I think that will cut down on, on some of that confusion. If I might, um, I have, because I have, uh, capable staff that are also joining us on this, uh, and watching our, our meeting here. Uh, they have sent me numbers for the, um, American Indian and Asian communities in terms of first dose. Um, as the numbers get small, the number, the population number gets small, we become less confident of the numbers, but I think they give you a, a sense. So, in the, um, Asian community, 59% have received at least one dose, and in the American Indian community, 53%. So, the, the two, uh, groups that I shared with you initially are the groups that are the most in need of catching in terms of, uh, getting doses. So, I know I only partially answered that question, but, um, I hope that was sufficient for now and, and you'll get more and accurate information soon.
Thank you. I, I, I appreciate that. I, uh, I think it is, um, it is true that we have all been living under the mask mandate for a long time. I think, uh, many of us long ago have forgotten, uh, which aspects of, uh, masking and social distance distancing were mandated by which units of government. Um, and, you know, which, which parts of it are actually a part of our city ordinance. So, I know that, for example, uh, people have been adjusting in the last few weeks to CDC guidance that says we don't need to wear masks outside. I, I, I don't remember what, what the city ordinance specifically says. So, I, I think it's important that we all be able to communicate this. And, uh, I see that the clerk posted the links in the chat and, uh, um, to the actual regulation, so we can all go back and read the ordinance. That's good, but we're going to have to communicate in much clearer terms than that, uh, to everybody what the city rules are that we're asking them to follow, because I don't think anybody remembers which rules are city, which rules are state, which rules are CDC. Um, and so, which ones have been repealed, which ones are refreed from? Uh, I, I, I think what I'm hearing overwhelmingly from my constituents who are texting me in a panic this morning is that, um, people are very confused. And they're concerned that their customers are going to be confused and that the other people they interact with as they walk through the city are going to be confused, and that nobody's going to be following the same rules. So, we have a lot of work to do today, um, to try to clarify this for everybody, to minimize, uh, conflict and confusion and stress, uh, for everybody who's trying to do their best to get out and support local businesses, uh, to get out and participate in art world, uh, to get out and participate in, you know, uh, the, the city in the ways that we've invited them to and make sure that they're doing it in a way that follows the rules.
Thank you, Councilmember. I put myself in queue, um, Commissioner, unless there's anything else you wanted to add there?
Um, I, thank you, Madam Chair. I am, um, getting some text messaging, um, about the, about the, the guidelines. Essentially, the mask mandate is, uh, related to indoor spaces, and it does have an exemption for two-year-olds and younger and those with medical conditions. Um, but, yes, we will make sure that you are all recipients of, uh, copies of any information that goes out, um, and I'm sure that it will go out even this morning.
Thank you. I have a bunch of questions about the data, which I recognize you may or may not be able to answer on the spot. But I wondered if the numbers that you gave us were percentages of folks who are eligible for the vaccine? Or if they include folks like children under 12 for whom the vaccine is not available? And then I also wondered, I'll just ask a question, so I'm sure you may need to get information from your staff or, or other where, elsewhere. Um, I also wondered if we know the data for Minnesota sit statewide? So, colloquially or, you know, put simply, are, are, are our vaccination disparities worse in Minneapolis? Or do you think that they're reflective of statewide racial disparities in vaccination rates? And then I'll just note, um, as Councilmember Cunningham said in the chat, um, which, you know, I mentioned as part of my question, of course, there's a whole segment of our population which is children under 12 who, for whom the vaccine is not available at all. I did notice that this morning Minneapolis Public Schools sent out an email to parents as well as announcements through social media that they will keep their mask guidelines in place in schools. So, that's, um, masks are required indoors. I think that they have started to allow some outside, um, time for children without masks. But essentially, the Minne- the Minneapolis Public Schools guidelines will stay in place as they were prior to yesterday's announcement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, um, the, uh, the state is asking schools to keep with their current plans through the end of the school year. So, that is, uh, guidance is coming from the state as well. And, um, just one addition to what I said about our, um, mask mandate here in Minneapolis, it also applies to those, uh, gathered where there are more than 500 people outside. So, um, I believe that our numbers are, the percentages are based on, um, those who are eligible for vaccine, and so they would be, um, 16 and over. I will correct that if I'm misguided, but I believe so. And so, I think that is a really important question because if we think about the notion of, uh, herd immunity, the virus doesn't know that you are 12 or 16 or 18. Um, the virus will travel wherever it finds a suitable host. And so, when we look at trying to get what used to be our stated goal of, say, 80% of the population vaccinated in order to have an environment in which the virus is not, um, proliferating, uh, we need to look at all the people, not just people who are eligible for vaccine. And so, these numbers are, um, do not represent our journey on this goal to being, uh, protected as a population, but they are more a percent of people who are taking advantage of an opportunity that exists for certain ages at this point.
Thank you. That makes sense, and I think it also, uh, part of my question, it, it makes sense for the data to be presented that way, so I imagined that was the answer. If it was including younger people, because our demographics are not equal, it may have affected the numbers. But it sounds like that's 16 and, or 12 and older, or 12 and older eligible for vaccine percentages. And then, do you know about the statewide?
Madam Chair, I, I, um, I'm getting texts that I'm reading. And so, yes, uh, the state of Minnesota is less than 50% fully vaccinated. Um, and not sure if that's, that's probably not down to 12 because the, the, the opportunity to go to 12 is fairly recent. So, our numbers are more likely to be 16 and up and not 12 and up.
And does Minnesota Department of Health have, they've been sharing, um, i- information about racial disparities in vaccination rates statewide?
Madam Chair, I believe I have seen, uh, PowerPoint slides where they look at, uh, success, um, or representation of, um, persons of color. Um, I'm not sure if that's on their dashboard or not, we'd have to look.
Thank you. Those were my questions. Councilmember Schrader?
Uh, thank you, Council President. Um, and, uh, thank you, Commissioner, for, for all, uh, that you're doing and all of these updates. Uh, I actually have di- different line of questioning, uh, on the mayor's report. Uh, first of all, I do want to thank Councilmember Fletcher for bringing up the, the mask mandate. Uh, it is something that's not just downtown, but it's also, um, just been affecting small businesses as well, uh, putting them in a hard position of, you know, wanting to keep the, the neighborhoods they serve safe. Um, and at the same time, putting them in a position of trying to have to, to police who and who not, should not be wearing a mask. So, do appreciate all the health department's work to, to educate folks on that. Also, wanted to also bring, follow up on another point of Councilmember Fletcher. These, these reports, um, it's unfortunate the mayor's not here again. Like, it is part of the requirement for the emergency declarations is a report to council, but it really goes beyond that. Like, it is not just for council, it's a report to be in public. It's a report to the, you know, thousands of people that we represent, uh, in our wards to get that information out there. While the mayor's not here, I did want to see if there was someone, uh, that would be able to go through some, um, parts of the, the update. I thought there was a lot of really important information to get out there publicly on housing assistance, so I'm not sure if there's someone on the line that could, uh, give a very brief, uh, update so people know about some of the services that are out there.
Thanks, Councilmember Schrader. Um, so you're asking for, um, staff to give, uh, information about access to vaccine?
No, I, thank you. If you want to look at, uh, like, starting on page, um, eight, there's just, there's a long list of rental assistance that's really come online recently, um, that really goes this page eight through page 10. Uh, so there is, as well as a lot of other funding, uh, that's coming. And I am looking for br- basically just a way to make sure that the public understands, um, all of the federal resources and others that are coming up for housing. There has been a lot of talk in the news about what happens, um, a- as the, the governor looks at, um, raising the eviction moratorium, uh, what's going to happen? What's going to happen to the landlords that have been waiting a long time, uh, to, uh, be able to, to make rent and make mortgage? And then, of course, what's going to happen to all the tenants? The, many of them who have lost their jobs and are facing financial hardship? What are, what are we going to do? So, there is a lot on that. Uh, so I think if we could have just at least some kind of briefing for the public of what would, is in there, uh, I think that would be very helpful.
Okay, I'm not seeing anyone chime in, so, um, why don't I move to the next council member in queue? And then we'll see, um, wh- what we can do about that request. Oh, no, I, I do see, uh, Director Brennan from our Community Planning and Economic Development Department. Director Brennan?
Hi, Madam Chair, Councilmember Schrader. Councilmembers, just, um, wanted to, I, I, I don't have the report in front of me, but I can certainly speak to the fact that, yes, significant amount of rental assistance is available for anyone who needs it. This information is on our, our website. It is, um, uh, I'm, I'm, I don't want to misstate it, so I will look it up and put it in the chat, um, when I'm done, um, when I can, when I'm done speaking, so that I can find it. Um, and there, the, the rent assistance that is available for people, um, it's available through a single portal. Um, it is, people can apply for all rent in arrears. So, rent going back for the last, um, you know, since the beginning of COVID. Uh, people can also apply for rent, prospective rents. If their incomes have been negatively affected by, um, by COVID, uh, they, and, and, and it jeopardizes their ability to pay their rent going forward for the, the, the next three months, then people can apply for that too. So, essentially, the amount of rental assistance that's available for people who have had any kinds of, um, a difficulty paying their rent or are behind in the rent, um, that is available. So, um, let's see, Amy Shutt, thank you so much. Um, uh, Amy Shutt just put in the chat that, um, there, this information is on the city's website. Um, and, let's see, I'm, I'm going to, I'm sorry, I'm going to look it up and then put it, put it in here when, um, when I'm done speaking. Uh, additionally, wanted to let everyone know that, um, we, at the next, um, uh, biz committee meeting next week, um, we will be, uh, holding a public hearing, um, on a new renter protection ordinance, and this is around evictions protection. So, the ordinance proposes to require that landlords give a, uh, 15-day notice before they file an eviction. Obviously, this is not in effect right now. While the, during the peacetime emergency, um, there is a, uh, moratorium on, on evictions. Um, so, this wouldn't kick in until that moratorium lifts and, uh, landlords are able to start filing evictions again for things like non-payment of rent. So, when that happens, um, and if, if the city council does adopt this ordinance, then that will be in effect and there will be some notice period then that landlords will have to give tenants before they can file the eviction. And, um, the idea there is that then during that 15-day period, people, renters can go out and, and get assistance. They can, um, they can go ahead and, and here it is now, I see it. It's this, it's RentHelpMN, so R-E-N-T-H-E-L-P-M-N. And the website is, um, RentHelpMN.org. So, that is available, and I'm happy to take any other questions that I can try to answer. But, um, I, I thank you, Councilmember Schrader, for answering, asking the question because we really do, um, want to get this word out as broadly and, as we possibly can.
Sure, and just, uh, thank, thank you very much, Director, I really appreciate that. I think, one, if you could talk really, really briefly about the foreclosure prevention assistance program?
Sure, yes. Part of, um, the, the, we partner, the city of Minneapolis, uh, partners with Minnesota Home Ownership Center. And the Minnesota Home Ownership Center provide, has a network of community-based organizations that serve, um, folks, uh, throughout the city and throughout the state, really, um, uh, using different languages and, um, providing, uh, foreclosure prevention counseling. So, these funds, um, have been, have been given to these organizations. Organizations now have access to, um, assistance that can help people pay their mortgage. So, the, the way to access that information, again, it's on the city's website, but also, uh, Minnesota Home Ownership Center, and that's MNHOC.org.
Thank you, thank you so much. I, I just really appreciate, uh, getting that information out there, uh, because I know a lot of people are in some really hard situations. Um, and it's much easier to help someone when they're in a little bit of trouble and only a couple of months of trouble and when all of this starts to go on and on and on. So, I, I think it's just good to start telling folks to reach out now and to really do what they would, to convey a bunch of these city resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, and thanks, Director Brennan, for jumping in, uh, and sharing that information here. Um, I know also that, um, the city, so many staff at the city have been working so hard to communicate out all of these various resources, um, coming through in news bites that many of us are able to share through our newsletters, and that a lot of these are partnerships with Hennepin County that has been such a strong partner in us and supporting folks through the pandemic. Um, okay, I think we had council... I'm sorry, there's just a lot of chats in the chat. I just want to make sure I'm not missing anyone. I don't think I see any other council members in queue to speak, but just please put your name back in if I've missed you somehow.
I think Councilmember Goodman may have been in queue.
There we go. I've lost her. Thank you, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, uh, Council President Bennett. I was simply in queue because I felt our staff were kind of put on the spot and thought I'd jump in, but then Andrea Brennan was able to jump in, and so I took my name out of the queue because she did a great job. And I would also agree with you, Council President, that the information about rental assistance has been very widely distributed through all of the city sources, newsletters. We've sent it out three times, I've talked about it at all my neighborhood annual meetings. And all of that is because of the work of Katie Topinka, Angie Skildon, and Andrea Brennan, who are getting the information out. I will note, 1,200 families have already been helped by Hennepin County's early efforts on rental assistance.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. And that is why I saw your name and then didn't see it. Okay. Uh, Christian Musicant has just noted that the requirement to wear a mask of outdoor gatherings, um, over five, so if you're in an outdoor gathering of over 500 people, there is still a requirement to wear a mask, and that is part of the state's, um, regulations, not specific to the city. And I think that is all we have, but please, again, if anyone else has any further questions or comments, just let me know. I was able, while we were, while I was listening, to find the statewide race data, which I will put in the chat. It's a little, it's a little different than the Minneapolis numbers. There are still disparities in the statewide vaccination rates with approximately, it looks like 55.7% of white people in Minnesota having one dose and 37% of black Minnesotans, 39% of Hispanic Minnesotans. So thank you again to all the staff who jumped in with limited time to prepare, to give us so much information. And we appreciate all of your work. I will just note, too, that, as I have in the past, that the, the health clinics, which are available on that website, the city's COVID website, walk-in clinics, those are being staffed by folks from across the city enterprise who are stepping up to volunteer and help out, as well as a lot of the staff at our health department who have been, for the past year, doing their regular jobs, plus contact tracing and education, as well as additional supports for testing and now vaccination sites. And so we just so deeply appreciate all that our staff are doing in this really extraordinary circumstances. It isn't sustainable, so we have continued to have conversations about how we might get more staff capacity for some of these more short-term needs. And I'm encouraged to hear some recent reports about that. So thank you again. And I don't see anything else. Oh, there's just a note from communications that there will be some information shared shortly. So that council members will be able to use some information detailed about the city's mask mandate and the guidelines that are coming from various, you know, from the state as well today, this afternoon. Okay. Thank you. So I don't see anything further. So I will direct the clerk to receive and file this report unless there's objections. Seeing that the clerk is directed to receive and file that report. The next two items on our agenda are both proposals to amend the city charter, which would be referred to voters at the November 2nd general election. So I'm going to invite our clerk to share some information about these. The first item is a proposal on government structure proposed by the Charter Commission. And I will turn it over to Mr. Carl to describe this report first.
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. I'm here this morning, as noted, to present a proposal for a charter amendment that was submitted by the Charter Commission pursuant to the provisions set forth in Minnesota Statutes, Section 410.12, Subdivision 1. As you know, the Charter Commission is like a standing constitutional convention. It is the body charged with maintaining the city's home rule charter as provided under both enabling constitutional provisions as well as state statutes. That body plays a role in any proposal to amend the charter and may itself initiate proposals to amend the charter of its own design. The current proposal is of this latter category. The Charter Commission intends to refer to the electorate a ballot question to amend the charter at the general election set for Tuesday, November 2nd. That proposal presents a series of issues pertaining to government form and structure. The Charter Commission voted to approve this proposed amendment at its regular meeting on April 7th and then adopted the final form as an ordinance prepared by the city attorney's office at its regular meeting on May 5. A copy of both that ordinance and the group's final report about this proposed amendment are included in the file for reference. If adopted, this proposal would define and separate executive and legislative functions through an executive mayor legislative council form of government. Under that proposed form, the executive and administrative responsibilities of the city would be vested in the mayor, who would be designated the chief executive officer of the city. And all legislative responsibilities would be vested in the city council. No change in the composition of council or in the manner of municipal elections is included in the proposal. No changes to the city's administration were provided, and no change to the elected park board and the elected board of external taxation are included in the proposal. The city's administration would be realigned to report to the mayor, and the mayor would have the power to appoint and supervise department heads with the council's confirmation of those appointments. Department head terms would be aligned with the elected term of the mayor. The council would retain authority over the office of city clerk, which is true today, and would gain authority over a reformed and elevated office of city auditor. The clerk and auditor would be the professional, nonpartisan staff of the council. The executive committee would be eliminated. The role of city council with respect to proposals initiated by the Charter Commission is a ministerial one. The council cannot prevent the Charter Commission from referring a question to voters, nor can the council alter or change the proposal made by the Charter Commission. The council's only responsibility in this regard is to fix the form of the ballot question, which means that the council must decide the language of the question as it will appear on the ballot. As it pertains to ballot questions, state law requires that the language of ballot questions clearly capture the intent of the proposal and that it be easily distinguishable from any other questions on the ballot. It must be framed in a form of a question to which voters may answer with an affirmative yes or a negative no on the ballot. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 205.16, Subdivision 4, the clerk must submit the ballot questions to the county auditor by no less than 74 days before the date of the election at which the question is to be referred to voters. Since the general election is set for Tuesday, November 2nd, that means all ballot questions must be submitted no later than Friday, August 20th. Furthermore, under Minnesota Statute, Section 410.10, Subdivision 2, the clerk must publish the entire language of the actual amendment, not just the ballot language, in the city's official newspaper once each week for two consecutive weeks prior to the election to give sufficient public notice of the actual text of the proposed amendment. As a city of the first class, this same publication requirement must be made in a newspaper that has an aggregate, regularly paid circulation of at least 25,000 copies for the same two-week period. Thus, the city clerk will need to publish the actual charter amendment in Finance and Commerce, which is the city's official newspaper, and in the Star Tribune, which satisfies the general circulation requirements for cities of the first class in the state of Minnesota. To be enacted, a ballot question proposing to amend a home rule charter requires the affirmative vote of at least 51% of all the votes actually cast on that amendment. If enacted, the amendment becomes legally effective and codified 30 days after the election, unless a later date for effectiveness is provided. In this case, there is no later date in the petition. Therefore, if adopted, the amendment becomes effective December 2, 2021. With that, I've completed my presentation on this proposed charter amendment. Staff have prepared a directive for the council, which would, if adopted, refer this matter to its Policy and Government Oversight Committee and also to the city attorney, and direct the city attorney to prepare and present to the committee that office's legal analysis of the proposal and draft ballot language. The city attorney would be directed to present those legal findings and recommended ballot language to the POGO committee at the appropriate cycle for next steps in the process. With that, I've concluded my comments, Madam President. I'm happy to respond to any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Carl. Are there any questions for Mr. Carl? I don't see any. Our staff directive is by Councilmember Ellison. Councilmember, would you like to move this item?
Madam President, just for clarification, although Councilmember Ellison's name is on that, that's a holdover from, my assuming, the chair of Elections Committee as an elections issue. Councilmember Ellison may certainly wish to move it or not.
Thank you, that was my assumption.
Happy to move.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing that, clerk, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Pomisano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That is adopted, and therefore, the staff direction was approved. Mr. Carl, could you remind us, did you tell us the estimated date that this? So the next step is that this will come back to a Policy and Government Oversight Committee meeting with the recommendation on language from the city attorney's office. Did you, did you tell us that date, or do you know a date range?
It could come back as soon as in the next cycle of the POGO meeting. It depends on how quickly the attorney's office is able to prepare its report. Clearly, since the final action has to be taken in time for final action by the council on August 20th, there is some time within that timeline for the attorney's office to complete its work. Because the attorney has been involved with the Charter Commission, I don't anticipate it will take long, but I didn't want to limit their timeline. So it did not get included in the draft staff direction.
Thank you. And just again, for the public who may be following along this multiple charter question journey with all of us, the role of the city council and mayor in this approval is to ask ourselves the question, does this proposal by our city attorney's office staff accurately reflect the question that was provided to us by the Charter Commission? Is that right? And so we are not asking ourselves if we personally agree with the content of the charter question. It is this narrow question of, is the question as written by city attorney's office accurately reflective of the intention of the proposal that has come to us, in this case, from the Charter Commission?
Correct, Madam Chair, that is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Carl. Okay, so that staff direction has passed again. That will come back to a Policy and Government Oversight Committee for that next step in this process. Our next item is another charter question. This is new business item number three. And this, again, will turn over to Mr. Carl for the description of this, a citizen petition initiated charter question.
Thank you, Madam President, and again, members of council. As noted, I am here to present the results of the verification of a petition that was submitted by the Yes for Minneapolis Committee pursuant to the provisions set forth in Minnesota Statutes, Section 410.12, Subdivision 3. To help frame the context of the decision that's before the body today, I'll first summarize the proceedings thus far on this petition. The Yes for Minneapolis petition was submitted Friday, April 30th by representatives of the committee and was received by the city clerk here at City Hall. It was formally presented to the Charter Commission as required under state statute at its regular meeting on Wednesday, May 5th. Next slide. So this petition seeks to refer to the electorate a ballot question that would amend the city charter at the general election set for Tuesday, November 2nd. The petition presents a series of issues, all pertaining to the issue of public safety and the structure and delivery of public safety functions within the city. Specifically, if adopted, the proposal contained in this petition would create a new public safety department within Section 7.2 of the city charter and would eliminate from the city charter the existing police department. It would establish, as the head of that new department, a commissioner to be nominated by the mayor and confirmed by the city council as provided under Section 8.4 of the city charter, which is consistent with the appointment process for other heads of charter departments. It would provide for shared oversight of the new public safety department by both the mayor and the city council. And it would allow the mayor and council, through ordinance, to provide for the structure, duties, and responsibilities and other operating matters of the new public safety department, including a determination about how law enforcement functions might be configured. After receiving the petition, the Charter Commission transmitted it to the city council and a copy of that transmitted letter signed by Commissioner Barry Clegg is a part of the file on this matter. The petition was received by the city clerk that same day, triggering a 10-day period for review and verification as provided under state law. That 10-day period began the following day, May 6th. The Elections and Voter Services Division, a unit within the clerk's office, handled the petition verification process under the very capable leadership of John Martin, one of our administrators in that division. Mr. Martin acted as the processing supervisor and was assisted by Barb Stone, who was the assistant processing supervisor. The verification was conducted between May 6th and May 12th, and a daily log of all activities is provided as part of the report, which will be submitted for the record as soon as this meeting adjourns. At this point, Madam President, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Mr. Martin, who is with me at the chamber, to provide the results of that petition verification.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam President and council members, it is my pleasure to present the findings of the petition verification process. First thing, I'd like to thank the members of our processing team for their work. I don't want to delay the announcement that our verification found the petition to have more than the requisite number of valid signatures. That means we find this petition to be sufficient under statute and therefore a valid petition. Having announced that the petition is deemed sufficient, I will now highlight briefly the findings of our processing teams. Can you go to the next slide, please? In total, the petition contained 2,553 pages and had a total of 21,652 signatures. In order to give maximum benefit to the petitioners, we requested a list of the city's registered voters from the Secretary of State's office on the same day that the petition was submitted, which was April 30th. Because the registered voter list fluctuates by using a list generated on the same day that the petition is received, it is more likely we can match signatures to actual registered voters living in Minneapolis. When compared to this list, the city, of the city's registered voters, as of April 30th, we found that 14,101 signatures were matched to valid voters in Minneapolis. That's a success rate of roughly 65%. To be deemed valid, the petition needed to have at least 11,906 voters' signatures to be valid. And the process, and the petition exceeded this minimum requirement by an additional 2,195 valid voter signatures. Under law, to be deemed valid, a petition must carry at least the number of registered voters equal to 5% of the total turnout in the city during the last statewide general election. The last statewide general election was the 2020 presidential election. At this election, a total of 238,104 ballots were cast, meaning that at least 11,906 verified voter signatures are necessary to deem the petition as being sufficient under law. To verify signatures that of, of registered voters, processing teams matched the information in the petition against the list of the city's registered voters that was provided by the Office of Secretary of State. If the signature matched with the list of registered voters, then it was verified by processing teams. If the teams used, if, if not, the teams used assessment codes to indicate the nature of the deficiency. Matches required processing teams to have reasonably certain that the signature was that of a registered voter. Questions that arose during the processing were presented to the supervisory team and recorded in the supervisor's log, which is included in the report before you. All determinations on such questions were decided by me in my capacity as processing supervisor. On page four of the report, you can see a chart that identifies the actual deficiencies in the petition where some signatures were not able to be matched to the list of registered voters for the city of Minneapolis or where other technicalities prevented a signature from being verified. As you can see on this slide, the greatest number of deficiencies were signatures by individuals who cannot be verified as being Minneapolis voters based on the list provided by the Secretary of State's office. There were a total of 4,252 signatures in this category, or roughly 19.6% of the total petition. The next most significant category of deficiencies were those that had missing or incorrect addresses associated with the signature. There were a total of 2,631 signatures in this category, or roughly 12.2% of the total petition. A full copy of this report will be provided to the petition committee and will also be uploaded to the file in Limms for public access. A certificate declaring the petition to be sufficient has been signed by the city clerk, and the matter is now presented for city council action, as provided under state statute. I will return the presentation to the city clerk for further comments and will be available to respond to any questions or concerns at the conclusion of our presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. And again, especially a big thanks to the processing team who worked so hard to complete this in record time. So the petition is deemed to be sufficient under law and therefore may be referred as a ballot question to voters this November. The council now has two points to address. First, it must determine this is a matter that is constitutional, meaning that this is a proper question for the charter and it is not in conflict nor in contrary to any applicable law. Second, it must fix the form of the ballot question. Again, as with the last petition, meaning that the council must decide the language of the question as it will actually appear on the ballot. As it pertains to ballot questions, the role of the council is a ministerial one.
As it pertains to ballot questions, the role of the council is a ministerial one. It's not a legislative function, as I mentioned in the previous agenda item. State law requires the language of ballot questions to clearly capture the intent of the proposal and that it be easily distinguishable from any other question on the ballot. It must be framed in the form of a question to which voters may answer with an affirmative yes or a negative no on the ballot. Pursuant to Minnesota statutes, as I noted, the clerk must submit all ballot questions to the county auditor by no less than 74 days before the date of the election at which the question is to be referred to voters. Because the general election is set for Tuesday, November 2nd, that means all ballot questions must be submitted later than Friday, August 20th. Furthermore, under state law, the clerk must publish the entire language of the actual amendment, not just the ballot language, in the city's official newspaper once each week for two successive weeks prior to the election to give sufficient public notice of the actual text of the proposed amendment. As a city of the first class, we also have a burden to put that publication in a newspaper that has an aggregate regular paid circulation of at least 25,000 copies for the same two-week period. Thus, as with the previous action item, the clerk will need to publish the actual charter amendment for this question in Finance and Commerce, which is the city's official newspaper, and in the Star Tribune, which satisfies the general circulation requirements for cities of the first class in Minnesota. As a reminder, to be enacted, a ballot question proposing to amend a home rule charter requires the affirmative votes of at least 51% of all the votes actually cast on the amendment. If enacted, the amendment becomes legally effective and codified 30 days after the election unless a later effective date is provided. In this case, there is no later date in the petition provided. Therefore, if adopted, the amendment would become effective by December 2, 2021. We'll move to the next slide, and I'll state that this is the completion of our presentation about the validation of this petition submitted by the Yes for Minneapolis Committee. Staff have prepared again a directive for the council, which would refer this matter to the Policy and Government Oversight Committee and also to the city attorney, directing the city attorney to prepare and present to the committee that office's legal analysis of the proposal and draft ballot language. The city attorney would be directed to present those legal findings and recommended ballot language to the Pogo Committee at the appropriate cycle for the next steps in this process. And with that, we have concluded our report. Madam President, along with Mr. Martin, I stand for any questions the council may have.
Thank you both, and thank you again for all the work that went into processing those pages we had initially set aside some time on Monday in case we needed it. And your team was able to get everything done in time for today's city council meeting. So thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item? Mr. Carl, you noted that, so like the last question, we're in this ministerial role. Part of our job is to similarly match the recommended language to the intent. And then there's a secondary piece, which is, is it constitutional, which isn't part of the previous item. Could you talk about why that additional question is part of this item and not the previous one?
Madam President, if I misspoke, it is always a question of whether or not a ballot question is constitutional, so it applies to both new business item number two and new business item number three.
Okay.
The city attorney would have to bring forward a finding that neither of those proposals is in conflict with or contrary to existing state or local laws and would prepare draft ballot language that accurately reflects the intent of the proposal. My apologies.
Perfect. It's very possible that I missed it, or I wondered if it was perhaps part of the charter commission's process itself. Okay, thank you. So we'll be asking the same two questions for each of those items, which were initiated through different processes. Any further questions? I'll recognize Councilmember Ellison to move this item as well.
Happy to move, Madam President.
I can second. Gordon?
Any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and that staff direction is approved. This item will similarly be back at a policy and government oversight committee. That means that the time we had set aside on Monday for a potential special meeting will not be needed, so we will not be holding a special council meeting on Monday. And then, Mr. Carl, do you have a sense of the timeline for this item to be at Pogo?
Madam President, as with the last item, it's really determined by the city attorney's office in terms of how quickly they can turn around their analysis and prepare the draft ballot language. So did not provide a definitive date, but knowing that there is ample time until August 20th for the attorney's office to complete that work.
Thank you, and thank you so much for your very clear explanations and your support of the council and the mayor and our community as everyone navigates the multiple charter questions that have been proposed. So that concludes that item, both of which are referred to Pogo. I believe that concludes all of the business in that section of the council agenda, which brings us to the reports of our standing committees. We'll begin with the report from our Business Inspections, Housing and Zoning Committee, presented by the chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Good morning, Madam President. Thank you. The Business Inspections, Housing and Zoning Committee is bringing nine items forward for approval this morning. Item number one is the first draft taproom and kitchen in the third ward. Item number two is the Satori Apartments Tax Increment Plan on West Broadway. Item three is the 2021 HUD Consolidated Action Plan. This will direct staff to submit the plan. Item number four are the liquor license renewals, and five is a business license operating condition at 4,000 Lyndale. Item six is a host approval for bond issuance at the Benedictine Health System. Item number seven is a rezoning at 3301 Nicollet. Item number eight is a right-of-way vacation for the Department of Public Works at 215 Washington. Item number nine is probably the most notable item. This is the regulation of off-street parking and travel demand management ordinance that councilmembers Gordon and Fletcher have been working on. With that, I'll move all items for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the committee report. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to make a quick comment on item number nine, since I mentioned it at committee at the hall and that I was thinking about an amendment to extend to more projects for the minor TDMPs by dropping from 50 units to 20. After further discussion with the authors and staff, I'm not bringing any amendments forward today. As I mentioned on Wednesday, I really appreciate the work of the authors. I think this ordinance is a positive change, and I'm happy to support it today. I think there could be value in mid-sized units in the 20 to 50 range, also being subject to the minor TDMP requirements. I believe St. Paul is looking at 25 units, for instance, in their ordinance. Administratively, the minor TDMP process is not a significant cost or burden and doesn't require consultants like a full TDMP would with a traffic study. However, to comply with the point systems, the point system in many cases comes with a cost via things like additional pedestrian realm improvements or incentivizing transit. I've personally got a number of projects that have been approved in my ward that are under 50 units, and I'd like to see more attention to incentivizing multimodal transit and pedestrian realm improvements. That said, this change is not the only tool available to do that, even though it is a tool. And as part of the evaluation of this ordinance, I know the question will be looked at of extending it further to more projects, and I think that's a good thing. So all that said, I appreciate the work of the authors, and I'm hopeful that in the future, we can build on the success of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to take the opportunity to speak to item number nine just for a moment to especially thank the advocates who have, you know, really persistently fought for something that I think is a really significant step forward for our city from a climate perspective, from a transportation perspective, and from a housing perspective. I know we'll get a chance to thank many of you in person later today when we celebrate this a little bit, but I wanted to acknowledge the grassroots activism that went into leading up to this, and especially to thank staff who worked very hard on this, Jason Wittenberg and Joe Bernard in particular, my co-author, Councilmember Gordon, his policy aide, Robin Garwood, and my policy aide, Dave Zaferin, have all worked very hard to get this to something that I think solves a lot of problems for our city and sets us up to build for the future. So thank you to everybody who put in the work on this, and I'm excited to vote yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon.
Yeah, thank you very much. And Councilmember Fletcher covered it pretty well, but this is a big step. I also want to acknowledge the Minneapolis 2040 Steering Committee that helped with this. So this was vetted in many different places in many different ways. The Planning Commission, I'm also going to just give a little shout out to Chris Meyer, who serves as the Park Board Commissioner on the Planning Commission. And before he did that, he was known to frequent the halls of the city council, promoting the idea of do we really need to require all this parking and maybe we should do away with the minimum? So I think he deserves some credit for his advocacy, but also his work at the Planning Commission to help get this through. I'm excited about it, and I think it's showing ourselves that the 2040 plan isn't something we're just going to leave on the shelf to get dusty and to forget about, but we are serious about implementing those ideas. And all the angst and all the difficulty and the challenges and the compromises we made getting that passed is paying off now because it's making this work going forward move more smoothly and more easily because we have clarity about our goals and why we have those goals and our strategies and implementation. So thanks to my colleagues, too. It'll be exciting to see this pass unanimously, which I'm expecting that it will.
Thank you. I put myself in queue as well. Just want to thank the authors, Councilmember Fletcher and Gordon, for bringing this forward. This is a really significant step in implementing the Minneapolis 2040 Plan. And I agree with Councilmember Gordon that all of the time and effort that staff and policymakers put into doing really deep and authentic community engagement, hundreds of meetings across the city over a number of years, to really drill down into our city's values and how those should shape decisions about infrastructure and land use and zoning have been so important in now implementing that vision as we move forward. Instead of taking every ordinance one by one with its own separate process, it's allowed us to keep a more cohesive vision and work together to implement it. Councilmember Goodman, I know, long before I was on the city council, was a trailblazer in reforming parking in the downtown area that she represented. Myself, as a very new council member, will never forget meeting with a man who owned a business in my ward. He was an immigrant who owned a furniture store in one of the most walkable and transit-rich parts of the state of Minnesota in Ward 10. And he wanted to redevelop his store into, he's one of the lucky folks who owns land in the city. Instead of renting for his business, he wanted to redevelop his land with housing above and his store below. And it was impossible with the 2014 parking requirements in place. It's one of the things that inspired me to work on parking reform as a new council member. And back in 2014, we passed some cityway parking reform that brought our minimum down to a half. Now this builds on that and does so much more by really drilling into, you know, the secondary piece, which is around climate and meeting our climate change and mode shift goals and really encouraging the kinds of modes that we know we need to get there to get our greenhouse gas emission goals met. Parking drives so much about the design of buildings and about the cost of housing in our city. That one parcel in Ward 10 is just one example of so many sites that literally could not be developed with previous parking requirements in place. And this opens up so much possibility, especially to develop the smaller-scale projects that so many of our constituents point to as they tell us the kinds of projects and housing that they want to see in their communities that for so long were made essentially illegal through restrictive zoning. This allows us to decrease the cost of housing by no longer mandating expensive underground parking. And again, the additional pieces in the TDMP encourage transit use and encourage buildings to really think about how they can be contributing to our goals of supporting sustainable and equitable transportation. So it's really exciting about this, and I know, you know, parking is both very controversial at times, but because we have taken this as such a values-based approach, it's such a thoughtful, you know, coordinated with the 2040 plan, based on so much time and effort from our staff, as Councilmember Gordon said, I think it enjoys broad support now. So thank you again to all who've worked on this. Is there any further discussion on the biz committee agenda? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next, we have the report from the Policy and Government Oversight Committee, presented by its chair, Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you so much, Madam President. The Policy and Government Oversight Committee brings forward 13 items today. Item number one is an ordinance adding the Juneteenth holiday for city employees. Item number two relates to the defense and indemnification of Robert Crowe in several legal matters, adopting findings of fact and conclusions of law. Item number three authorizes an extension to a contract with Perceptex, Inc., to continue the employee engagement survey needs. Item number four relates to the automobile no-fault claim of Robert Olson. And items five through 12 are various legal settlements. Item number 13 is a resolution confirming renewal of the new name of the Lake Street-Greenway partnership to integrate policies and mobilize investments for Lake Street and the Greenway. Madam President, I move approval of these items.
Council Vice President has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and that report is adopted. And as we did at committee, I'll just note that Council Vice President and I are working with staff to provide at an upcoming policy and government oversight committee some more background information on the city's self-insurance fund and other questions that have come as a result of the Pogo agenda that we just adopted. Next, we have the report from the Public Health and Safety Committee, presented by that committee's chair, Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. The Public Health and Safety Committee is bringing forward nine items for approval. The first is approving Neighborhood Revitalization Program, NRP, Plan Modification Process Approval. Item number two is authorizing the grant application to the Minnesota Department of Commerce for Auto Theft Prevention. Item number three is authorizing a contract amendment with the Department of Public Safety Bureau of Criminal Apprehension for fingerprint-based background checks. Item number four is accepting a grant from the Minnesota Homeland Security and Emergency Management for Police Bomb Disposal Unit Services and Training. Item number five is authorizing the grant submitted to the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services for COVID-19 health literacy enhancement. Item number six is authorizing a contract with the Minnesota Bureau of Criminal Apprehension for providing investment. for providing investigative forensic DNA analysis on police department case and evidence. Item number seven is authorizing contracts with a number of community-based organizations and individuals related to violence prevention work. This is related to the Office of Violence Prevention, Violence Prevention Fund, so I highly recommend for folks to look at that item on this agenda and be able to get a better understanding of who's doing some really incredible violence prevention work in our city. Item number eight is the directing staff related to creating an unarmed trafficked safety division. And item number nine is authorizing the city of Minneapolis to become a community collaborator with the Growing Up in Cities project to identify disparities in health and well-being outcomes for young people, and authorizing a no-cost MOU with the Growing Up in Cities project. I will move approval of all nine items, Madam Chair.
Councilmember Cunningham has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Finally, we have the report from the Transportation and Public Works Committee, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards 14 items today. Item one is the Washburn Alley construction between Washburn Avenue South and Vincent Avenue South. Item two is the contract amendment with the Minnesota Department of Transportation for the Bryn Mawr Hedge Landscaping Project. Three is the contract amendment with AAA Building Maintenance Company, LLC, for Alley Snow Plowing Services. Four is the contract amendment with Stone Pros LLC for Alley Snow Plowing Services. Five is the contract amendment with Cabot Excavating LLC for Alley Snow Plowing Services. Six is the contract amendment with Blue Sky Electric Company for Vinland Riverfront Lighting retrofit project. Seven is the contract amendment with White Company Incorporated for the Hoyer Heights Street Reconstruction Project. Eight is the license agreement with the Met Council for Secure Bicycle Facility in Ramp B. Nine is the Transportation Action Plan Amendment to All Ages and Abilities Network. Ten is the pedestrian street lighting corridor amendment to street lighting plans to reclassify the listed addresses. Eleven is the manual on uniform traffic control devices for streets and highways, and these are our city staff comments. Twelve was an item that the committee approved deleting, and thirteen was the bid for Class One Rip-Rap. Fourteen was the bid for the Stormwater Facility Special Vegetation Management. Madam President, I move all items in this report.
Councilmember Reich has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
13 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next, we have the reports of special committees. We have two items on the executive committee agenda for today. That report will be presented by Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you again, Madam President. And the executive committee brings forward two items today, as you noted, which are the two appointed positions in the City Coordinator's Office, Race Equity, Race and Equity Director and the Service Center Director. I move to refer both items to the Policy and Government Oversight Committee.
Council Vice President has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and those items are referred to POGO in the next committee cycle. Next, we have the order of announcements. Before I see if others have announcements to make, I just have a couple of scheduling announcements. I wanted to note that with the adoption today of adding Juneteenth as a city holiday, we will need to reschedule our regular meeting that was planned for that Friday, June 18th. So, working with the clerk's office, we will be rescheduling that council meeting to take place one day earlier on Thursday, June 17th at 9:30. So, there is also a committee of the whole meeting that was previously scheduled for that time. That meeting will be rescheduled to take place one day earlier on Wednesday, June 16th at 10:00 a.m. And so, all public and internal facing calendars will be updated in the coming days to reflect these changes. This is also the cycle where we anticipate hearing a proposal from Mayor Fry and finance staff on the first tranche of funding from the American Rescue Plan. So, I have been working with the clerk with many thanks to Mr. Carl and to Deanna Pennington in my office and others, Amelia from Finance, who are working to create a calendar that we could share soon with you all and with the public to consider and bring those first round of American Rescue Plan dollars through the city council for approval. My understanding is that the first round will be in the range of $50 to $70 million and primarily focused on funding that would be spent in community, on community supports, with perhaps some staff capacity to administer those funds, and that the remainder of the American Rescue Plan proposal from the mayor will come either as part of or soon after the proposal of the 2022 budget in August, and that spending overall, the American Rescue Plan funding is available for up to three years. So, Finance and the mayor's office are working on that longer, that bigger piece, as part of the longer-term planning for the annual budget and beyond. I'm happy to answer any questions about that if I can, or I could also defer to staff who may have more information about the mayor's process. So, those are the scheduling announcements. Then we have a few councilmembers in queue. Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. As per usual, this is the time of year when at least one, usually two councilmembers, will announce a big event, the NEMA-sponsored Art-A-World. But I will note, and this is very consistent with our earlier conversations about rapid announcements from the federal and even state level in terms of public safety precautions. I'm aware, as my colleagues are, and want to reemphasize, we're very clear in Minneapolis, we still do have our protocols in place regarding masking and distancing, is my understanding. And even if that weren't the case, the buildings that sponsor many of the events, which will have very limited capacity and not 100% complete openings, although they are inviting very limited and highly managed protocols for some interaction, that that be respected, and it's very important that that will make a successful, limited, NEMA-sponsored Art-A-World experience in these spaces. But those spaces do need to have their own protocols, and they should be respected. And also, within those spaces will be studios which may not be open, but those who are will probably have their own expectations and ways to feel safe for themselves and the people visiting. And I just wanted to emphasize that because, as mentioned by my colleagues earlier, there is a lot of different information out there, but I think it's very clear that we should be respectful of the spaces and how they're managed within this event. But not to sound like a complete bummer, we do know that the artists appreciate interaction, and they certainly enjoy the festive nature as we return to a more normal event in times to come. But I also know that they really get excited when they have great sales, and you can go to the different websites and purchase this art, and I know they really have fun after the weekend with all the event and conviviality of people, but they really get happy when they have great sales, and that can be done online. So, I wanted to make that note as well. Thank you for indulging, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Reich. Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam President, and I concur, Councilmember Reich. I hope to bump into you at the Northrup King Building sometime this weekend. Lots of really great Potterhorn artists have studios and artwork that will be available there this weekend. I just wanted to take a brief moment to thank my colleagues here today for the support and approval of the Lake Street-Greenway Partnership. I wanted to especially thank councilmembers Goodman, Council Vice President Jenkins, and my brother in the struggle, Councilmember Jamal Osman. As you know, Lake Street suffered the most concentrated and deep impact during the burning down of our city, and I remember late last year, probably midsummer, early fall, I was really struggling to figure out how to have a good intervention in those conversations around rebuild and racial equity and the rebirth of our city in light of a moment where we were, I think, asked to respond to structural violence. And so, I reached out to Councilmember Goodman, and she was very gracious with her time and her advice and her mentorship, and that led to other conversations with our previous Director for Economic Development from many, many years ago, Mr. Mike Christensen, and with Louis Smith, and with Hennepin County Commissioner Marion Green, who has also been working on this a lot, and had, you know, a lot of those conversations gave birth to this Lake Street-Greenway Partnership Resolution, which we have adopted today, and I think it's going to be a really impactful moment for us to come together as a coalition to support Lake Street redevelopment centered on the voices of the cultural communities who make up Lake Street, and that's really the bang for the buck here, is that as we saw so much power and influence, you know, paying attention to the corridor, we knew that we had to uplift and support and build the capacity of those very people of color on the corridor who have been making Lake Street what it is for decades. And so, this Lake Street-Greenway Partnership does that. It brings together one table where everyone can participate and communicate and coordinate, and so, we're really excited to do that. So, thank you to all of my colleagues, and thank you to councilmembers Goodman, Jenkins, and Osman for pulling through with me on this one. And lastly, I just wanted to mention that I'm really excited about the Juneteenth holiday, and I'm really thankful for the folks who made that happen. I was very happy to support that today. In connection to conversations about holidays and special celebrations in cultural communities, I wanted to make a note that this year, on November 2nd, that is a Tuesday, it is our election day here at the city for many council races, well, all of the council races and the mayor's race as well, and that day also happens to be Dia de los Muertos, or Days of the Dead, which is celebrated in Mexico and many Latin American countries, and of course, heavily celebrated in Minneapolis. So, I just wanted to give a heads up to all of the folks who are thinking about organizing Days of the Dead events and festivals and activities to consider that November 2nd is a full election day. A lot of the campaigns will be very active that day, trying to, you know, essentially drag people to the polls, as well as a lot of election night results and parties will be happening that night. So, just encouraging you to think about that long term, and of course, I'm encouraging folks in the neighborhood to consider that as well. So, just wanted to share that as a sort of a heads up and planning tool. Thank you, and hope everyone has a good weekend.
Thank you. Councilmember Osman.
Thank you. I just want to take time to wish everyone who has celebrated Eid yesterday Eid Mubarak. The 30 days of Ramadan has came to conclusion yesterday, and a large part of our community have celebrated, including me and my family. Eid is a time of compassion, love, and happiness. I just want to wish everyone Eid Mubarak, especially those that are, might not be able to celebrate because of the injustices that are taking place in their land, in Palestine. So, Eid Mubarak, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Eid Mubarak, to you and to all who are celebrating, and thank you for noting the violence in Palestine. We were able to be represented by our Congresswoman Ilhan Omar during a very powerful set of speeches on the House floor yesterday. If folks haven't had a chance to watch that special session of Congress, it is a very powerful statement of commitment to justice and for the ability for every single person to live in peace and worship in peace. So, thank you. Any further announcements? Seeing none, that concludes all of the business for our meeting today, and we will stand adjourned. Thank you.